Well, I one of my clients, Marwell, does not have internet in his town hall.
I was gonna say, Whitley County. Wow.
And so, okay, let's go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the PBD Public Library Board of Trustees for August ninth, twenty twenty-three, where we're trying to do this at six oh one P M. And that we have a forum present. Um, uh, we have persons, two people missing are, uh, Mr. Sartor. So, um, then I will go ahead and suspend the regular meeting at this time to conduct the budget hearing, and I will turn that over to Mike Ashkey to give us an introduction to the budget, and then we hear from any members of the public who wish to hear.
So, I have gone through the process of preparing our budget for twenty twenty-four, uh, looking at what we, uh, what was done for twenty twenty-three, and taking into account all the, uh, DLGS recommendations and anticipated, uh, levies and stuff like that, uh, to come up with what we have, uh, before you. Uh, there is a general four percent decrease, uh, taken in general. That's what the expected levy, uh, is supposed to be for next year. So that's what we are asking for, uh. Yeah, I, I gave you a breakdown of everything that, uh, as I'm planning and questioning for. Were there any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a graduation.
I know this was your first time as our director of doing this, and this is not easy, and.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Other thing that you'll notice is previously, the rainy day was there, but wasn't allocated, which meant we could use it without taking a special, I mean, uh, request to the county council. I am allocating it this year just in case. Hopefully, we don't have to touch it, but, uh, it is allocated that way ahead of time. That way, if we do need it, we don't have to go through the, uh, oops, sorry.
All right, you notice we have some members of the public here who are going to hear you. Anybody here have questions about the budget?
Can we say anything? I didn't sign a paper.
Well, you, about the budget, it's, it's the budget hearing. So you may say something about the budget.
I just think we watch out for the taxpayer. It's my concern.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Did you sign a paper? Did you sign up to speak tonight after a couple of comments?
Oh, no, no, but this is, this is a public hearing.
Sure, for the budget.
For the budget.
I said, I did.
For the budget.
For, for the budget, okay. And that makes, that makes sense, and that's exactly what we'll make sure that we take care of. Um, sir, did you have any, any questions about the budget or concerns other than, again, to try to watch out for the taxpayer? Okay. Okay, hearing done, uh, Mike, do you have anything else to add? Any other input from the board? A hearing done, we will close the public hearing. We will remind, uh, the board that we will have, uh, the matter up for adoption at our next regular meeting. And, uh, they, if I'm wrong, tell me, I'm just doing this off, off of memory now. And we will call to order the regular meeting. With that, I will ask if any board member is comfortable making a motion regarding the minutes of the July twelfth.
Do you think we will make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting?
Move to approve the minutes of the minutes of the July twelfth meeting. Is there a second? Mark, a second, Mark, a second. Is there a discussion, Lori, you're still in the morgue, or are you through?
I'm through.
Okay. And any discussion already done, all in favor of approving the minutes of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's, are approved. And it looks like that we have some general discussion items here about building projects. Is that the last page of the packet?
I believe it's the last page, yes.
Prioritization. Mike, uh, how would you like us to, well, it's gonna be a major for you, for us to proceed on this. Do you want us to, and it looks like you've already prioritized things. I think you have a great deal of disagreement with that.
Okay. Dude, that was my, I, I just wanna make sure that these were what I saw as priorities and, and focuses. Uh, I just wanna make sure that they're aligned with what the board is thinking and doing. And, uh, as, uh, presented with your, uh, packet, there are four that I'd like to, uh, start moving forward with. That's the replacing the gutters, replacing the, uh, all the fluorescent lighting with L E Ds. Uh, replacing the drinking fountains with, uh, newer filtered, uh, fountains. Uh, and then looking at the solar, which would be economy, it'd save us money, but it potentially brings us in.
Okay, now, the, um, the, the first two, those were the ones that were recommended by our H V A C people like two, two or three years ago, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I also have the highest? That's, no, no, that's, that's, I, that was the only thing I was gonna check, was to make, make sure that those, that those got on there, because I knew that they had recommended that before.
What about the, the lighting on the exterior? I remember seeing that somewhere.
So, in talking with, uh, Kissinger, the outside, actually, has already been done. Oh. They, they were, uh, already, yeah, they, they did the other ones to, uh, L E Ds. So, he was in last Friday, uh, to take a look, and I asked him for a quote for anything that's not L E D. So, we have, can this be updated?
I assume that's just the other.
Yeah, it's basically downstairs. Upstairs, from what I understand, is all of it.
That's where the fountains are, is that, is that where all the fountains are?
Yep.
Um, my only thought is with the P D array, I've obviously, it's been a huge story of P D, but given my past experience, I wanna make sure that we do it, so that, so that makes sense.
Exactly.
But beyond that.
Making any questions or concerns?
On this, where's the solar?
That, that's the P D already array on route. It's, it's the.
Oh, it's, okay. Oh, I see.
Are you gonna get a question, Lori?
I have noticed, uh, one of the light posts when you first pull in the parking lot, the paint is coming off of it. It's getting janky.
Yes.
And I don't see that on the list anywhere, but it could be just that it's something that's tough, because I guess that, that exposure, the sun exposure might have just kinda gotten looking bad this summer.
So, for me, I, I was including that with the, the painting of the top pillar for the south.
The top pillars on the south side, okay.
I don't think that was part of that, included when they were originally, but taking care of external painting.
Gotcha, okay.
That's where I was including that. Yes, I noticed that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure. You try fire every day, so.
Looks like one of those space saucer lights.
Yeah.
That are like balliards out of the front door.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, when they go janky, yeah, that, I, I always, I'm like, okay, that's gonna.
Yes.
I looked, I looked yesterday in the, for English today, there, there's a couple of screws missing.
Okay, and that's, yeah, I, several times I do that, it's like, oh, I'm gonna need hardware, and, uh, okay, I'm.
I do the same thing.
I'm just gonna leave it there, and go with it, and come back.
Just a couple of teen tiny screws, so.
Perfect.
Mark, any questions or concerns? Uh, Lori, I think you can catch up.
No, no, that was just, that's, that was something that I had seen, right? And, and where would we propose to pay for these projects from?
So, I'm looking at this nodgrass fund to take, uh, care of these first few. Uh, there's two hundred eleven thousand in there. There's no restriction on use for that. And so, we'd be able to take care of, uh, depending on where the, I think you can take care of all three of those with this fund.
Thirty-nine eleven, right?
Yeah.
This is your highest, I think, is it?
Yeah.
We've reached the highest, and it's about a hundred forty-one thousand. There's two eleven, it's not. All right, well, it doesn't sound like there's any objections to the priorities that you set there, Mike, so I think that makes sense.
Just from my understanding, is there a further process that has to go? I don't know if we're, if we're spending any of those. As long as we're aligned, I think we can go right ahead.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that this is, uh, these projects are appropriately aligned with the donor intent of the Snodgrass Fund.
Do you know beyond, well, you know, what we don't have to.
No, I just.
I will, I will double check to make sure that there's no other stipulations of what would be the.
Yeah, so it, it, I just.
Cause that has come in with the last slide.
It's come in with the last five years. It was, but I don't know if, you know, the way that they were thinking of honoring.
Was having H V A C.
Was having an H V A C system put in. So, again, I would go back to, this is why we should have moved forward with the bond issuance. I know it needs to be difficult today, but I don't, I don't believe that that's the best way that we could honor that contribution to the library personally.
I told you, so it's our voice. Look.
No, not well.
Very tight, very, very tight.
But whether, above and beyond whether it's the bond issuance, I just wanna make sure that that is really what the family of Mrs. Snodgrass had in mind when they made that gift to the, right, that they didn't want something. Showy, maybe something with her name on it, or a collection, or, um, I just wanna make sure before we decide. But I am happy with the prioritization. Those, those are projects that we need to, for sure.
Well, I'll tell you what, since, in spite of the fact that I said we don't need anything else, I guess I would entertain a motion to adopt, uh, the priorities, uh, for the capital improvements that have been set forth by the director. Just, just to make things real.
The only thing I would say on that is that, um, it looks like the prioritizing is for like, uh, I don't know, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, because obviously, we're not just going straight down the priority list. So, what are we really adopting? Right, no, I just mean like if I adopted something, what are we saying? You know, we're doing a five, because it's, I'm assuming because it's a low amount.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, what we're talking about is making the priorities, the first five, plus the drinking fountains. Is that, am I close, or do we have another thing like this?
I didn't hear anything.
Because that would be, uh, the economizer on the outside air ducts and all air handlers who controls all mechanical equipment. Um, the fluorescent lighting to be converted to L E D.
Okay, I'm with you. So, you, you're saying that those two first, two ones are priority, but we don't yet have something like, you say, or decided.
Well, I, I'm just asking, like, why do we have to approve this whole thing right now? Could we just move forward? Did you put this in the budget, in the budget plan?
No, just, it's gonna, it was coming out on the spot. I was, I'm taking out progress.
Okay, well, then, let's proceed with, let's go ahead and listen, and I was, I was gonna read them, do that. But are those, are the ones that you'd like to start with, uh, my, the top five that are listed, which are one, one, two, two priority, and then the drinking fountains? Is that, is that correct? Or was, what am I missing from it?
No, those are the ones that.
Oh, and then the repaint the pillars, we would also talk about, that was.
Oh, I just was asking where that was, we are talking about.
So, that would be, that would be those six projects we get the first priority, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so, so as soon as the spots were, we find the spots or have the spots, we would move on to the, the air handler.
Okay. And if no one is comfortable moving that, I would assume that there is no objection to proceeding that in that order. So that kind of approved by affirmation, there's no objection. Okay, no objection, then we can move on. Um. Well, I think they have to be Sunday hours, yeah.
Cause it's the end of the summer.
Is there a battle?
Good, oh, it just comes up every, 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 every hearing, it's, uh, every five years.
And we go back and forth on that, too, so.
And, and maybe, so, I'm gonna buy what the staff has said. From the staff's understanding, who personally got, is that the board was set to do it last year, then Mary said no, and changed her mind. And so, they're like, well, why? There, there's reasons not to be open on Sunday. So if that's not the case, if there's a reason the board doesn't want, wants to be open on Sunday, and I can take that back to the staff, and justify it to them, and then explain it to them, I think we could stop having this discussion. But honestly, I, I do not see.
It's, I don't know that there was ever any clear indication from us that we did want Sunday hours. So I think that's been mischaracterized or misunderstood. I've always thought Sunday hours were something that was preferable to not having Sunday hours. I understand the staff doesn't think it's, that it's not fun for the staff. But discussions have always been around, when do people come into the library? Because we are trying to serve the public.
And it's not Sundays. They do not come in on Sundays.
And that's different information than, and again, my memory may be faulty, but that's different information that I've got in the past.
Do we have our, the third numbers?
So, another, another project that we should really look into is a better door counting system. Because we have one, but it also catches, uh, the board, the, if you were going to the restroom upstairs. Uh, so, those are skewed.
So like, you came out of the children's library to go to the bathroom, it counts you, even though you got counted and came in the bathroom, okay?
So, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I had, I had to look at, at numbers, uh, and majority of the larger numbers are people coming in for an event. So it's not people upstairs using our resources, and if they're, they are here, there's, you know, a handful, five, six, maybe, and they're coming in, and they're sitting on the computer, and they're on social media.
On Sundays, specifically.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the events are something, there are something. Because.
Baby shower.
We used to, we used to do that when we were closed. We did stop that, because there were problems getting people keys and things like this.
Right.
So now that they can only rent and have access to the community rooms when we're open. So we would effectively eliminate any use of the community room on Sunday afternoons.
True.
But what we talked about in the past was that this someone would come in and the room was rented from the room that rented.
We, we could, so.
And, and we could, we could do that.
We could certainly do that if, if it's desirable to close, and I, I, aside from, and, 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 yeah, I, I don't want the staff to hate me necessarily, but that, my job is really, I, I'm looking out for the patrons.
Yes, how many people do we have on Sunday?
Five. We have five staff on Sundays, and four, five, six people. Uh, so that's one per person, and I ask any questions. So, staff are, uh, either doing, making up busy work for the four hours, or they're not doing something throughout the week, so they can do it on, then on Sunday. And so, they're, they're postponing, so which means during the week, they're making up busy. So, there is not really an effective use of their time.
I would toss this out. What image does it present if we go to the public and tell them, okay, we're closing, we're cutting down on your hours?
I think that after last month's meeting, I would say that there's a strong desire by people in this community to not spend money on our library.
Oh, I'm, I'm just throwing that out as, as a.
Do you have any?
A fun process.
Right, no, I get it.
Images, images.
Images is important, yes.
Cause you'd also have to take into effect of, uh, our lighting, stick it electrically and, and getting savings.
Yeah, there'd be some there. We have wall therapy on the, that's, yeah.
Unless we did to one employee.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not blatantly against the idea, but I, I do think that if we do work the packets, numbers, I would bet more than a, even a decision, they would need us.
And that normally runs, that normally starts to begin after Labor Day?
Yeah.
So, would that, would, would our next meeting be before that?
Well, well, even, even then, we don't have to, even if this decides to not have Sundays, we could make that change in January for the next, next calendar year.
I, I, I would like to spend some more door, again, not that I doubt the credibility of the staff, but it's, I would like to kind of see where those numbers go and where they are.
And community room rentals, too. Like, people reserving the community space on Sunday afternoon.
And, and we didn't close all, um, during the summer, right? On Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
And is this is maybe, cause did, we had scaled that community room usage and stuff during COVID. So getting a track record of what, you know, typical usage is. Maybe a little challenging based on the last couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we'll be hard to get the semi numbers, you can have it open on Sundays for a while.
And that's, that's what I was thinking, is that right now, those are recollections from.
Yeah, well, I, I do have the door count stats.
Okay.
So I, I do have some, some numbers, but you have to take into account the staff that are going in and out, all the other things, so, so they do.
If, if, if in fact, there's only five people that ever come in on a Sunday, or half a dozen, I mean, we have more staff here than patrons, it doesn't make sense to be eight people. I, I, I agree. I guess I, that's, I had not heard that before.
Right, if you remember. Anecdotally minded on Sunday, having been one of the five. It is quite, quite, yeah.
Didn't slurp.
It is, actually, I don't, I don't, but I don't commit any.
And I can, I can tell you that, uh, for a class B library, for Indiana Law, we are required to have forty hours per week, including two evenings and one weekday, weekend day.
That's sad.
Yeah, and we, uh, currently, we're doing sixty when we have, uh, Sa- Sunday hours, and fifty-six people take those Sundays out, which is actually exceeding the minimum for a class A library. So Allen West, Allen County, and, uh, we looked at all the libraries in Evergreen, you know, a lot of libraries now, apparently like a hundred and forty-eight is what we looked at. Uh, there were ten of those that had Sunday hours. One of them was A C P L, and they're only open, uh, the main branch to another fourteen branches.
Evergreen now?
No, they're not, but we added.
Oh, okay.
Our neighboring libraries, um, uh, A C P L.
That's bigger than anything.
Well, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was A C P L.
But, yeah, of their fourteen branches, only the main branch has more to adhere to the, uh, homeless population downtown than anything else. Their, their usage as far as.
We'd never say ever, if the numbers are in fact, but I, I like, I guess, I balance, and then maybe visit it at the next meeting or something. I didn't need to act like I dreaded it so much, but.
No.
Yeah, I was kinda hoping you would have the information about why last time, because you had a little discussion, we're like, okay, and we're being supportive, you know?
Yeah.
And then it's just like, no, we're gonna be.
And, and, yeah, and that's, that's what the staff's question is, too, that they were convinced that it was gonna happen, and then from their point of view, maybe changed their mind, that they don't know why, or, and so on, and they didn't know, it was a board decision, so had to.
Well, and we'll weigh in the morality, because I understand that.
Yeah.
We're not coming, so, so I understand that is in fact, it's just not the only factor.
Well, any of them actually would say they have their hours.
They wanted to cut their hours, because right now, we move hours during the week to cover the Saturday, and they go, you have higher bins, and you're, yeah, we're more busy, yeah.
So, do, how far back do we have, like, door count data, how far back?
Twenty eighteen or nineteen.
Just for argument's sake, or just for research's sake, it would be interesting to see what our Sunday usage was. Like, if this is just a, we live in the post-COVID world now, and, you know, Sunday isn't gonna be the library area.
Even with the fallibility of going back and working with restrooms, because we can, we can assume there's some distortion.
Yeah, I just would be curious if that was, you know.
And I have that already.
Five years ago, people were really in here a lot on Sunday afternoons, and now they're not. Is there a reason?
And that may be, and, and with the, with the electronic resources that we have, I understand there may be less, less traffic. Okay, thank you. Mobile table that, then. And go to the director's report.
All right, uh, copyright issue has been resolved finally. That was before my time, and was holding on it for a long time, but, uh, they finally gave them to an agreement, um, to settle it for one month, so, uh, a thousand dollars.
Is there, is this that we corrected or learned to avoid the same problem again?
Yes. It, it was, from what my understanding, it was outright errors, and we were made aware of it. We said we could stop it, took it down, and everything like that, so, yeah.
Cause I know that that's easy to do, something like that, assume it's public domain, right?
Yeah.
Could be some more of the movies than any other customers.
No. It will be for that. Any questions on that? Uh, I T support, uh, currently, the library contracts with, uh, A B C as our I T support. They, uh, manage our, uh, servers and make sure, and some of that stuff. They are a company out of Indianapolis. That, that, and I, none of us are really happy with them. They seem to be more, just selling us more, more specifics of things than actually answering our questions, or might certainly that we're a contract. So we are looking to make a switch from them to, uh, A M E, which that, uh, has a rent, uh, location here in Portland, uh, that comes highly recommended from others in the industry and the area. So that would take place, uh, December, uh, January, the one would be A, A B C. Uh, and so there'd be a little bit of overhang for that, uh, just to make sure that, that. They, they would continue to monitor our servers, uh, we've met with them. They can actually bring, consolidate what we've asked A B C to do, consolidate the servers. It goes down from the four plus, uh, virtual servers to one server and a couple of virtual, virtual communities, and save us, actually save us money in the contract and everything like that. So, that's the plan for that, uh, service support. Well, this, this Friday, uh, in conjunction with H P, staff will have the option to do a, um, annual one test, uh, for free, no cost to them, uh, they'll come in, uh, technicians will come in, do basic, basic health information and blood draws, uh, for blood count, lipid profile, metabolic panel, and A one C, uh, and the doctors will be available to the staff, and they're, uh, providers who, uh.
And H P is doing that, we don't have anything to do with it, we're not getting any of the information.
Correct.
We're not making ourselves, but.
Correct, this is all, all the H, H P, they're doing it, and we have it. So we have that, that's one way, uh, and this will be happening April, that's one way to, uh, to encourage staff to be healthy and take care of them. Another thing that we're doing is, uh, the library, uh, contracted with, uh, E A P, Employee Assistance Program, uh, so their, the group from them is coming in, uh, to our September meeting to kind of, they share the information about it with you guys and staff, and, uh, to make sure they know about it, all the resources, to, they hopefully start utilizing it, and that aspect. So, uh, the last thing that I have was, uh, policy review. We're, uh, starting that, uh, time period to start reviewing our policies and our personnel policies. To me, it's informed, uh, keep looking at those. We're also looking to, in the next couple of months, you'll, you'll have stuff to start looking over and review. And I want to give you a heads up, that's coming. I also look at changing our, uh, format. It's very much a format via physical book, a line type thing, manual. I want to change it to more of a digital version. So it will be, you have, uh, emergency, emergency charges will be a policy, which will be easy to find, uh, online, and easy for staff and agents to navigate. So that's just something that's.
We're gonna stick with the same rotation of review, though, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And that's all I had, was the big questions about the other departmental reports that you've seen.
Just for what it's worth, that was A M E and A B C both.
What did you say, Spencer?
AME has been delightful to work with.
Okay, don't watch.
That's what we got.
They, they specifically didn't really give them.
Questions regarding any of the other reports or comments?
I saw it look like it for spring.
It's been awesome.
It was awesome. And they, because they were having a cruise in, they had, all their books were like car related and it was really cool. It was very thoughtfully done and I was super impressed.
And worked to collect all the books.
Did you really?
Darling, darling.
Somebody noticed.
I noticed.
Darling got me a lift, got the list when I was running the shelves trying to find them all.
It was fantastic. I, it was just, I thought. Yeah.
For a man, it has been a while, yeah.
He would have been happier if he had that old card catalog to flip through.
Okay. I think we're at the point where I'll ask folks to look over the financials, specific references to claims that have been presented. And discuss any concerns or questions? Realize just that silly thing like that.
I do, I do, I know.
Back on.
I did have one, I'm trying to remember what it was, what it's mainly. It is a database that we subscribe to, so it's a learning database for like, just kind of one action. It's through our website. So, and that was a good point. One of the things that we are doing in our staff, staff meetings, we are reviewing our databases with everyone. And Beth is doing a little training on them, including all seeing where it started with the lowest head counts and working our way up. And so last month we did the, there's a travel one, and we had 130 hits this last month. If we knew more about it, when it was reported on the website, we would have looked at it more. So that we're trying to return our investment or down. Do we have a process to review all the databases to, to meet them out as they?
Katie manages that and interacts with those statistics and stuff like that.
Great question.
There are no other concerns then? I would seek a motion to approve the claims.
Still moved.
We're moved to approve claims. Is there a second?
That's the second.
That's your second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the claims as presented, as I say, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Claims are approved. Those will be coming around for signatures. Is there any other business to put forward for tonight? With that, we will close the regular meeting. Folks?
Yeah.
All right, we're back. Talk to this lady. We're going to have an executive session now, so we're going to ask, but I wanted to tell you, I do something.